Good evening and welcome to the July 10, 2023, meeting of the Planning Board of the Town of Chatham. My name is Catherine Halpern. I'm Chair of the Planning Board of the Town of Chatham. This meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format, both in person and with remote participation. Also, this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. I do need to ask if anyone is recording the meeting. Please notify us. I don't see anyone connected remotely, so no one's recording. I'll read a few points regarding our hybrid format pursuant to Governor Healy's March 29, 2023 signing of the Acts of 2023 extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GL 30A 20, until March 31, 2025. This meeting of the Chatham Planning Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410 and the conference ID number is 863-554-393-POUND. That's 863-554-393-POUND. Or you may also join the meeting online using Microsoft Teams through the link in the agenda that's posted on the town website. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel 18, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. So before we get started, let's do a roll call of the board. Bob Wurchafter.
Bob Wurchafter, present.
Art Spru.
Art Spru, present.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, present.
Charlene Greenholt.
Charlene Greenholt, present.
Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus, present.
And this is Catherine Halpern. I'm also present. Megan Story could not be present tonight. And also, I will ask if any board members need to recuse themselves from any matters on tonight's agenda.
Art Spru, I need to recuse myself from the Holy Redeemer Parish application. I'm a member of the parish and I actually donated to this campaign, so I'll recuse myself from this.
Thank you, Art. All right, let's get started with our first agenda item. That's the minutes from the June 12 meeting. Do I have any additions or corrections to the minutes from any board members? No? Yes. Yes, you were absent, Charlene, so you would abstain. Thank you. Anyone with any corrections? Could I have a motion to approve as drafted?
This is Warren Chain. So moved.
Thank you. Could I have a second?
I'll second that, thank you.
Thank you. Bob Wurchafter.
Bob Wurchafter, approve.
Art Spru.
Art Spru, approve.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus, approve.
And Charlene, you'll abstain?
Charlene Greenholt abstained.
Yes, and this is Catherine Halpern. I also approve the minutes as drafted for the June 12, 2023, meeting. Next item on our agenda is the Planning Board representative to the CPC. The Select Board have asked for our recommendation for Art Spru to continue as the Planning Board representative. And I'm going to ask Art if he confirms that he'd like to continue.
Yes, I was wondering if we should include this with our annual election of new members positions? And then if we do it at the same time, or do you want to do this now?
Well, it is a separate action. We usually do the reorganization of the board on the last meeting in July, so that will be scheduled for July 24. And as I understand, Ryan Select Board would like to have our recommendation?
That is correct. A recommendation was requested through Shawna.
Yeah, so it's more timely if we could do this separately at this time.
I certainly will agree to continuing in this role. It's very enlightening to be his part of that group.
Great.
I'm going to second that.
Okay. Okay, great. All right, are any other comments from the board? Because then I think what our action will be is we want to send a positive recommendation that Art Spru could continue as our representative to CPC. Charlene.
I will so make that motion.
Okay, thank you so much. That's a very different type of motion from Charlene, but I appreciate it. All right, yes. So let's take a vote. Bob Wurchafter.
Bob Wurchafter so approves.
And Art Spru.
Art Spru, approve.
And Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, approve.
Charlene.
Charlene Greenholt, approve.
Okay, and Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, approve.
And I also approve, and Art, again, we want to thank you because it is a lot of work and we do appreciate your planning board representation on the CPC. All right, great. Next item on the agenda is site plan review for 44 Highland Avenue. And this is the Church of the Holy Redeemer. And before I introduce the applicant, I just want to mention your report from Ryan does describe this as a limited site plan review. The Holy Redeemer Church does come under the restrictions of the Dover Amendment as a religious or educational institution. And in that regard, we do a limited site plan review. And we should just take a look at the following: adequacy and arrangement of pedestrian access and circulation, walkway structures and overall pedestrian convenience, and location arrangement, size, and general site compatibility of buildings. So did you want to present on your behalf, or Ryan, did you want to present?
Sure, we can pull up the plan and I can describe the.
Thank you so much.
Application. If there are any specific questions, perhaps you could answer them. So we received a building permit application to construct a roughly 1,100 square foot addition to improve, really ADA accessibility, to the parishioners. Under the site plan review criteria, that constitutes an enlargement, and so it's captured because we don't have a waiver provision. But Town Council did provide some guidance for how to conduct a limited review based on the guidance from council directing the board to really only consider aspects of form, setback, open space, landscaping, et cetera. I called out the two criteria that are listed that Catherine just referenced, the adequacy and arrangement of pedestrian access and circulation, walkway structures and overall pedestrian convenience, as well as the location arrangement size and general site compatibility of the building. The plan that's shown here does show the addition is that dark gray box. And while it's hard to read, perhaps you can see in your pockets that the setbacks are identified there, and it's well within the setbacks for the zoning district. So I would submit that this is just an opportunity to have a site plan of record for this property, but conditions can be discussed by the board and determined what may be warranted as necessary.
Right, great. So I'm just going to ask if there's any questions or comments from the board. Bob Dubus.
Yeah, I have a comment. I think that part of this is also a safety issue. And I think that it's a better setup all the way around with a new elevator. I think the old one is pretty well taken care of. So I don't see any problems with it safety-wise. I think it's a great thing. I think on the outside, I think the overall picture of the building will not be disturbed. Thank you.
Charlene, did you have a comment or question?
Amen to that. Okay, good.
Any other questions or comments? Then I would invite a motion to approve the site plan as submitted for the 44 Highland Avenue Holy Redeemer Church.
Madam Chair, I would move that we approve the limited site plan review for 44 Highland Ave., the Holy Redeemer Church, as it meets the necessary criteria as outlined in the staff report.
Thank you very much. May I have a second to that motion?
Bob Wurchafter, seconds.
All right, we'll do a vote. Bob Wurchafter.
Bob Wurchafter, approve.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, approve.
Charlene Greenholt.
Charlene Greenholt, approve.
Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus approves.
And this is Catherine Halpern. I also approve. Thank you so much. Great. All right. Next item on our agenda is long-range planning discussion, which is continuing from previous meetings regarding the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. I think our principal planner, Ryan Kristenberry, has a slide presentation. And she's prepared in the staff report a summary of open issues that we do need to consider tonight and hopefully come to decisions on all of these points. But I'll let Ryan go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is a memo I had prepared for the June meeting, but unfortunately, we were unable to convene to discuss it at that time. So hopefully you've had a chance to sort of digest some of these recommendations and we can talk about whether there are other outstanding issues that need to be discussed and addressed. But the goal really here tonight is to take some of these open items that have been sort of recirculating in your discussions and deliberations and make some decisions on them so that we can move the article forward for public outreach this fall. So the first, actually, let me back up just a little bit. I put together some slides just for the benefit of the public that may be engaging online or in watching future recordings of this to really talk about the purpose of the district and what the form-based code for the district really entails. And the purpose is sevenfold, really, to implement the goals of the comprehensive plan, to preserve and enhance the existing character of the West Chatham Neighborhood Center, to promote adaptation of existing buildings and permit redevelopment and infill construction that preserves the character of the district, to promote multimodal, especially pedestrian-friendly, design and development, and to encourage more efficient land use through reduced parking requirements, to create stronger connection between community vision, regulations, and development plans, and create predictable development outcomes, as well as to allow more diverse housing types attainable to year-round red. as well as to allow more diverse housing types attainable to year-round residents of all income levels. So you're quite familiar with those, but again, I think it's good to just lay those out for people perhaps just tuning in. So the district really is the work product of a visioning analysis that was done in 2013 and '14 by the Cape Cod Commission that recommended a form-based code. Form-based codes typically follow the structure of the building, the facade, certain building design elements. In addition to those form and dimensional requirements, a schedule of uses has been proposed for this district that details which types of uses were allowed by right, which are allowed by special permit. And it's worth noting that most of the residential multifamily components are either by right or special condition uses. That does not mean that they wouldn't require site plan approval by this board, where certain conditions can be placed upon those, but they are by right building permits with site plan approval. So the handful of items that have been sort of discussed and need some finality are the density recommendation for the district. I'll get into what the 2014 report had initially recommended. There's been discussion about the prohibition on single-family uses and whether that needs to be called out as an explicit prohibition, or whether it's implied by the creation of a multi-use district. There's been a desire for year-round rental requirements, whether that needs to be within the zoning, or whether that can be a special condition of a site plan approval, is something we can discuss. The district boundary has ebbed and flowed over the years, and I've suggested another possible recommendation or revision to that boundary. The RPZ footnote language, a lot of time and energy from staff and council went into identifying appropriate language to address the concerns of residents about land uses that were lawfully existing within the RPZ. I believe that we've captured that to the satisfaction of the board. And then affordable and attainable housing. It's a priority of the district to be able to promote affordable and attainable housing. We're looking into capturing that for this district, but also in an inclusionary and incentive zoning bylaw that's currently under development by our Housing and Sustainability Director. And parts of that separate bylaw, we envision, will have components that are reflected here as well. So here is the, sort of the base level analysis that was done to support the creation of this district, the Visioning Project Final Report in 2014. It really identified redevelopment and zoning amendment scenarios for all of the village centers, West Chatham being one, and the first that the board has focused on. The comprehensive plan identifies West Chatham as the second most important commercial district, aside from downtown, so it was a good place to begin. In addition to that report, a build-out analysis was done that made a recommendation on the appropriate level of density. And to support that build-out analysis, a sewer analysis was done, working in conjunction with the commission and the Cape Cod Commission, to support some of the assumptions that were made in the build-out, to see whether there would be flow capacity for the different types of uses. So there's a lot of detail contained within those, and they're available through the planning board's webpage. There's a separate project page on the commission's website that connects you to all of these documents, if you're interested in really getting into the details. So the single-family prohibition may be something that doesn't necessarily need to be called out expressly as a prohibition. The creation of the district would establish a mixed-use zoning district whereby single-family residential uses would not be allowed. I think there's been some confusion about whether or not detached, single-family structures would be allowed, and they would. Under a multifamily scenario, you could have multiple detached, single-family structures on one parcel. That would not be captured by a prohibition. There are a handful of existing, single-family dwellings in the district that may become non-conforming as a result of not being allowed uses anymore, unless there's some language added to recognize the zoning setbacks and dimensions of those properties, which we can explore a little bit more if there's interest. But single-family uses are not identified in the use table as allowed, therefore, they would be prohibited, so calling out an express prohibition may not be necessary. The year-round rental requirement, so I've suggested that multifamily dwelling units and conversions of existing dwellings to multifamily, just those two uses, actually, could be subject to a special condition review by the planning board. So under site plan review, you can impose a restriction at that time that requires the development, depending upon the nature of it, to be year-round, so you wouldn't necessarily have to expressly write that into the zoning. It can be a part of each development review on a case-by-case basis, but you do have that control under site plan review authority, or you could have that control if you structure it this way. So the district boundary, as most recently proposed, in, I believe, December, perhaps January, considered adding four parcels to the southeast of Route 28. And I've suggested removing those four parcels, one of which is town-owned conservation land, which is to be combined with the Buckley property, that is also now town-owned and undergoing development scenarios for housing. So leapfrogging that and including a parcel makes the district a little bit disjointed, so I thought just removing those brings the district more in line with the boundaries that were established in the comprehensive plan as well. The RPZ footnote language, again, here it is, contained in its entirety. No further edits or recommendations have been made by this. This has been supported by council. There was some public discussion around it. The board, I feel, is, expressed their satisfaction with these as, again, appropriate ways to regulate those lawfully existing uses that are within the RPZ in the district. And then affordable and attainable housing. I think what we're recommending under the inclusionary and incentive zoning bylaw is density bonuses to developers to create affordable and attainable housing. The recommendation of the 2014 Vision Report, the density was four units per acre. It's been my recommendation in this report to return to that level of density, given the analysis that supported that, while using a density bonus as an incentive under the inclusionary and affordable to increase density on a project-by-project basis, to help create affordable and attainable housing. So that's something that we are, I'm working with Gloria, the Housing and Sustainability Director, on getting that language right. But that is an appropriate and defensible way to justify additional density on a project-by- project basis, whereas the baseline density for the district is consistent with the planning and build-out that was, had been previously developed. So next steps really are to finalize the district and begin public outreach this fall. We'd be looking to, in tandem with that, finalize the inclusionary and incentive baseline thresholds and the density bonus, conduct the public hearing in December, January, roughly of 2024, so we have plenty of time, and we're not rushed leading into next year's town meeting. So that was just a walkthrough, and I'd be happy to start wherever you'd like to start.
Maybe we should consider them point by point, as you have them outlined in your staff report.
Okay.
And just see if there's any open issues from the board, any questions, reconsiderations, or if we're ready to move ahead as a board. And we can take a formal vote on all of these issues if we need to. So first, let's consider the density issue. And as Ryan explained, we had been looking at eight units per acre as a minimum density, but upon further consideration, the final report from the Route 28 Visioning Study does recommend four units per acre, and Ryan is correct that the analyses support that density. I'll ask for your comments. I do want to suggest or recommend, actually, as your chair, that we stay with the four units per acre, because we do have the analyses that support that. We can expand that, as Ryan suggested, as incentives when we consider the inclusionary, affordable, attainable piece. We can also expand it perhaps in future actions, when we have additional build-out and/or infrastructure analysis that would support greater density. But I think without that support of the analysis, it is a legitimate question, you know? We need to know that eight units per acre is supported by infrastructure and build-out proposals. So could I have any comments or questions or discussion of the board? I'm looking at Warren. Charlene, did you have--
Why do you always start with me?
Well, I just, you looked like you had a thought in your mind, and you were ready to speak, so--
Well, it's funny, I've now been on the planning board for a number of years, and I'd never heard discussion until tonight about the visionary program that was finally approved in February of 2014, I think it is. We have gone forward robustly on discussions of density in the past, and I noticed that in the strategic plan of the town, there's no reference to the Route 28 visionary study either. The objectives that are in there have been robustly reviewed here many times. And I keep reminding myself that the reason that I was first confronted with, when asked if I wanted to be on the planning board, was, you know, that, you know, was I prepared to try and get some affordable housing in town? It's, we've got a major problem. And I said, yes, and if we now go to four units per acre, that ain't going to get us I think I've, I heard from Ryan, there are about 10 single-family homes to begin with. There are some Section 40 homes that are going to be there, those will be single-family. And if you take the remaining open land there and put four units per acre on it, you're not going to have a whole lot of houses in total if the whole thing was built out. Even if you have redevelopment, there's some existing housing that would be part of the redevelopment, so you'd lose some and you'd pick up some, maybe. But four units per acre, when you compare it with surrounding towns, you know, up in Orleans, they're talking about 20 units per acre when they're developing things. Nowhere have I seen anything as low as four units per acre. If it's four units per acre, and then part of it has to be affordable, well, I assume it would be one. Well, that's 25% of the houses, or the units, would be affordable. I mean, that's the least it could be. But it's one. In other words, that would be one affordable unit per acre, and there are just not many acres there to develop, so it's just not a lot of affordable housing for which you would look long-range into the future to see the potential in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. So in general, I, you know, I am certainly not in favor of the four acres, or four units per acre. With respect to the build-out study, it was hard for me, hard enough for me to wade through the visionary study, all 100 pages of it or so, and to go look up the build-out studies, you know? But the build-out study, I assume, was based on the entire stretch of Route 28. It's unclear to me whether it was done with or without an assumption that the flexible zoning overlay district was going to be eliminated. I assume it may have been done both ways, but if you assume that's eliminated, that probably takes 30% of the, of the housing out of the equation completely. And it really does seem hard for me to believe that our little West Chatham Neighborhood Center, that has maybe 10 plots in it, developed at four per acre, is going to make any difference to speak of in the build-out analysis for the entire length of Route 28, from town all the way to the, to the western border. When the time comes for other neighborhood centers to be looked at for their zoning, I certainly assume there'll be some similarity in the zoning that's appropriate, but I certainly don't assume that once we've done it for West Chatham, that it's a template for anywhere else in terms of density, or setbacks, or other types of features that would be specific to that neighborhood and to the people that are in that neighborhood. So there would be differences. So merely having a higher density in West Chatham Neighborhood Center than was proposed under the visionary study for the entire stretch of Route 28 doesn't faze me a bit. It's only four extra units. What we had talked about is eight being in our draft versus four. Yes, we haven't talked about the incentives. It might all get all the way up to 12. But the number of actual houses, whether it's four versus eight, that's four houses per acre, on the few acres that are available in West Chatham, I can't believe is going to, you know, sink the build-out analysis, saying that our wastewater treatment plant can't handle that de minimis number of extra houses that were not assumed in, in that analysis. I agree that, you know, until I hear otherwise, that the four acres, four per acre, for the entire stretch of Route 28, probably makes some sense. But again, we've taken, what, 75% of Route 28 and gone from GB3 or small business, which can have housing in it, which is denser than four per acre, and we've turned it into R20 zoning. I mean, that's a huge reduction in the number of building units or housing units that potentially could be built out. And it seems to me that, you know, that must be a large offset in terms of this build-out analysis, but I haven't waded through that analysis. But at any rate, given that one of my primary objectives of this zoning is affordable housing, attainable housing, or just plain lower-cost housing, never mind the affordable, attainable issues that are there, would suggest that four per acre is not getting it done. It's just not going to create any meaningful number of affordable units. And so I'm very much opposed to changing what this board had, albeit with a different composition of members, you know, wrestled with at some length, and come up with what I thought was a reasonable compromise of eight per unit with some incentives that might get you to 12, incentives to be defined, you know? How do we, how do we incentivize somebody? And, you know, I still, I haven't seen anything in the visionary report, which, again, was mostly done in 2013. I mean, that's 10 years ago. You know, a lot of water under the bridge since then, a lot of discussions in this board since then, and where we've come out is, we want to try and maximize or increase the density in this tiny piece of Route 28, which is not to say we're looking to increase the density of the town of Chatham, because all the rest of Route 28 has yet to be determined, and it's already been gone from GB3 to, and small business, to R20. So there's been a huge reduction in the density, theoretical density of you build out Route 28. And so I, you know, just have a visceral reaction against going down to four units per acre, recognizing that, recognizing that it is mentioned in the visionary study report, and there's no question about that, but I don't think that that visionary report and the build-out was focused on solely on the West Chatham-- was focused on solely on the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. You could build out the West Chatham Neighborhood Center dramatically higher than it's currently built out and I don't think have much of an impact at all on, on really the wastewater of the town. So anyway, my comments on density.
Okay. Yeah, I think, Ryan, maybe we need to clarify a couple of points.
Sure, there's a lot to unpack there. So I believe, you're right, a lot has transpired since the 2014 report, including an incredible housing crisis. And I think the board's intention of increasing the allowable density as a direct result of those challenges is an admirable one. But the build-out has not been done to support that and part of my role is to make sure your recommendation to town meeting is defensible and is ultimately successful. So that is the, the primary reason for returning to that prior planning analysis that had been done. To that, I would say that approaching the housing situation through a density bonus does offer increased density allowances. I think any developer looking at four units per acre, but that can get eight units per acre on a case-by-case development scenario would be attracted to that, provided they provide some level of affordability for those four additional units. That's the vision that I think we are, we're trying to present to you as a, as a policy to consider both here and then in the inclusionary ordinance. So I don't think that, that the density for every parcel would be limited to four. I think there's opportunity for density bonuses, particularly for, for housing, meeting our housing needs. I also think that there is a lot within the West Chatham Neighborhood Center beyond just the density issue. There's been a lot of building design, form, walkability that would be a shame to be lost if the district isn't established, right? I mean, zoning is a living, breathing document. I believe establish the district and then we can tweak it in years in the future, right? We can revisit the build-out analysis, we can see whether or not there's wastewater capacity for additional units. The, the build-out scenario that was done for West Chatham Center was based on several workshops and the vision of those participants to develop that scenario. So the four units per acre is very specific to the district. So I think it's, it's good to respect that prior level of work, even if it is 10 years old. We're still following our comprehensive plan, which is 20 years old. You know, planning is a long game. And the flexible development overlay district, the elimination of those was a recommendation of the Route 28 visioning project, but it was separate and independent from creating higher densities in the village centers. Establishing this village center, the components of this district would not exactly match the cornfield or Crow Road. Each one will be as unique as the village district is, so those will be separate planning efforts. It's not a, a replicable, there may be items that can be replicated, but it's, it's not like we'll, we'll roll this out in, you know, the other districts every subsequent year. But I digress, but I, I hope I touched on some of your concerns.
Ryan, I just wanted to clarify, so the, the build-out analysis from the 2014 Route 28 visioning study, four units per acre was pertaining to West Chatham, not for the entirety of Route 28.
Correct.
So it's not that we get this reduction in density because the, what was called the in-between areas of Route 28, in between the villages, the neighborhood centers, got reduced density. My understanding, and also as stated in the comprehensive plan, that's basically been a given, that those so-called in-between areas were, the intention for those areas was to change them from small business back to residential zoning. And it wasn't in some sense a density swap or a reduction, a reduction in density in the in-between areas so we could increase the density in the neighborhood centers. And I think all that's being pointed out here, I mean, I agree with you, Warren, that, and I, and also how, as Ryan has commented, that subsequent to the 2014 study, there has been a tremendous housing crisis on Cape Cod. And the board's response to that housing crisis was when Cape Cod Commission again came back to us with the first version of their Form-Based Code version of this bylaw, which was still at four units per acre. The board at that time took the action to say we want to increase it. I think what Ryan is saying, and part of this is based on some public comment that we have received, is that to take that action, to make that increase right now, we do not have a build-out analysis that would support that. And we also don't have an infrastructure analysis of West Chatham itself to support taking that action of increasing it to eight units per acre. And if we're going to present that to the town, we have to understand that we don't have analyses that support that increased density. So one, when Ryan and I have discussed this in our meetings, one course of action we considered was, okay, what if we do the analyses? What if we do the infrastructure analyses at eight units per acre? And the build-out analyses for West Chatham, not the whole of Route 28, the build-out analysis, can we do that? And the thing is, is that's going to take funding, it's going to take time, it's going to take, probably Cape Cod Commission hire them. It will probably mean delaying bringing this before annual town meeting, at least till 2025, at least. And so we need to make a choice. We need to make a choice whether we should bring it before annual town meeting 2024 without the supporting analyses at eight units per acre? Or should we bring it before, or should we wait till annual town meeting 2025 and get those analyses? Or should we, it is a somewhat conservative route to go forward with the analyses that we have at four units per acre. And what Ryan is suggesting, we can augment that by what will, what we don't have under consideration tonight, but we will have it soon, some recommendations from Gloria about, including some points about inclusionary zoning in West Chatham that will give incentives for increasing the density for more inclusion of affordable and attainable. So we're going to be, so anyway, so that's the thinking, I hope that's clear.
And to that end, I'd be happy to advocate for those technical assistance funds as part of the community development budget so that we can have that authorized by town meeting consistent with this approach going forward to town meeting as well, so we can initiate that work.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, Madam Chairman, you may note that I certainly did not suggest that we ought to redo the build-out analysis, because I know what that would mean. And it, you know, I, absolutely not in favor of that. I took great comfort in Ryan's suggestion that four units per acre does not preclude at all there being some incentives which would permit additional density. I think that's an important element, because the objective is what you're left with, not what, you know, before incentives are brought in. I would, I do think that it's an interesting question for staff to consider as to whether, as we look forward to other neighborhood centers and the rest of Route 28 and what may have happened since 2012 and 13 when the build-out was done, as to whether it's a useful exercise, regardless of the West Chatham Neighborhood Center, I think it might be, because sooner or later, the questions are going to come up for those areas. One of my comments would be, it's very important that we consider how to increase the probability that incentives will be sought by a developer rather than merely offered in whatever bylaw we come up with. There needs to be incentives such that they'd rather get the extra bonuses rather than not.
Yeah.
And I think included are some of the things we've talked about. There's no payments in lieu, those ought to be eliminated. I think we need to figure out a way that if there are attainable, affordable units part of the incentive package, that those are the units that are built first, not last. And I do think that it all rolls in as well with, with the issues which we have yet to discuss, but single-family houses and how that can be part of the equation and/or the year-round rental objectives. I'm very concerned, having been on the committee that came up with the short-term rental bylaw, not bylaw, the regulation, knowing what, knowing what it takes to get a bylaw approved. I was extremely pleased that they went with the regulation rather than a bylaw change for that. But I am very much fearful that to the extent developers begin to like the activity in a neighborhood center, that what you're going to end up with is housing units that are there to be rented out as investments and nobody lives there. And we will have created a ghost town if you look forward 50 years of a bunch of investment properties that have people, you know, renting by Airbnb. There's some control over that in the town's new short-term rental bylaw. But I think that we don't want to create a bylaw regarding housing in general in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center, which makes it even feasible, far less possible or incentivizes merely building units that are meant to be investment properties and rented out to maximize the, the revenue potential. What we want is the exact opposite of that. We want to create places that can be neighborhoods in what most of us understand that to mean. I think the, the comments from the long-range plan, which indicated what our objectives were, places that are walkable, that you can have everything that you need within walking distance, are all important elements here. And you need to keep an eye on what is likely to happen unless we make it difficult or impossible. So I am very encouraged by the idea of using incentives to get the density up to a meaningful level, which I think was eight or more per unit. And, and I'm a realist as well. If we're going to have an issue with getting approval by the town for more than four per unit because, or per acre because there is a study that was done over multiple years, which talks about four per acre is all we can support for sewage flow, then I would say it's got to be four. But if we need some incentives to try and accomplish the objectives, which I think have come into crystal focus since that study was done.
Yeah, no, you're absolutely right. I think since that study was done, things have changed. But, you know, we still don't have the analyses at this time to support what we'd like to do. But Bob, you want to say?
Yeah, I, a couple of things. Mostly I agree with Warren. But I'm, I'm a little scared of a, of us approving the bylaw in this way with a recommended four units per acre, because I don't think we should be building any properties that are four regular housing units on any property in West Chatham. I think there has to be a requirement that at least one of them is affordable. Otherwise, why are we doing it? It's, whether they become rental units or they just become four very expensive houses that are jammed in there, that's not the intent here. So I will, I, I, I'm a little concerned here. I, I think the two things that would make me not be concerned are things that are coming, but, you know, they, they're essential to what we were trying to do here. So if, if we delay the assessment as to whether we have the coverage, doesn't that also delay the, the solution of putting in more sewage capacity there? If that's what it takes to, to, to make it work? So I think that study needs to be done as quickly as possible so that we can figure out what, what the capacity is there. If it is on average four units, then, then we probably should be recommending three units or, or three units maybe so that we have extra capacity for those peoples, for those other areas that want to make it eight. But I, I'd like the idea of making the, the number small for any, any project that doesn't include affordable or attainable housing. In fact, as I said, I don't think we should be allowing any property to be developed at four units if it doesn't have at least one. And I think that you don't get to eight or 12 unless everything above the four is affordable or attainable. Why, why should we give up these precious units for anything other than affordable and attainable? So I, I think we need to think a little bit more strongly about that four units just being anything. I think we have to accelerate that study on, on sewer capacity. And we need to have a very clear bylaw in, going at the same time that has the incentives in it. Otherwise, we're passing something that is just going to make it easy for, for nice houses to be built there, but not really reach what we're trying to do.
Okay, yeah, Ryan, Ryan, did you, I'd like to, ask Ryan to comment on Bob's.
One comment on that I think is important, because we talked a little bit about it during the inclusionary and incentive presentation overview, is where you set that threshold to capture what the inclusionary affordable requirement is may be separate from the density. So the density may be four units per acre, but if a multifamily development with a minimum of two units, if that's the threshold that you want to set to capture, then one of those units is affordable, the other is market rate, right? So Gloria is, is prepared to present to you what that baseline capture threshold is. So for instance, in Provincetown, developments of three to five units have an inclusionary percentage requirement of 16%. It's a formula that they have figured out how to make work for them, but we try to bring something similar to that to you. So there may be an opportunity for you to capture with that threshold under the inclusionary incentive, one, if not more than one, of a multi-unit development.
But we, we can't pass that without also having that.
Yes.
And we're proposing to have that as part of this bylaw in addition.
And if I could just mention also, we can postpone this discussion of density until the next time that we meet with Ryan and Gloria and we have specific points from Gloria about the, the inclusionary piece and consider the, just continue our consideration of density along with that. We don't have to, in other words, we don't have to make this decision tonight. We can consider it together with the affordable and attainable housing piece. And that might be an easier and better decision for this board to make. And I'm just going to ask, Ryan, if we were to do just the analysis of the infrastructure, do you have any idea how long that might take to get an analysis for greater density in West Chatham? Just for the infrastructure, maybe not the build-out analysis, but just to have that reconsidered? And my understanding just, you know, that it was considered with four units per acre doesn't mean that that was the maximum allowed. It just meant that's what was considered. And the response from, as I recall, it was Dr. Dunkinson was, you know, it's okay. That's, that was approved. But I, I don't recall any wording that that was the maximum, so, yeah.
Right, so the bill, I mean, build-out analyses require a lot of assumptions.
Right.
Right? And I think that in order to have any additional density assessed, we would want to follow the same assumptions that were used in the 2013 report. You know, our natural resources department, working with the Cape Cod Commission, followed those assumptions, looked at certain land use types under that density and determined whether or not they would have excess flow capacity. So that's the way that, those tables read. But again, a lot of assumptions were made about restaurants, the number of seats in that restaurant, et cetera. So I, I think that I would want to, I would suggest that we work with the commission to do that work, following that same analysis, so we're consistent. And that would be a, a work product over the course of a year.
Can we get that?
A year.
For August 4th?
No.
No, so that's what. That's what I was trying to explain. That's what we're working with. Yeah. That might take another year. Yes. Charlene?
It's my understanding, Ryan, that the build-out analysis looked at number of units, not number of bedrooms.
Right.
To me, that's where there's a flaw in that. And for whatever reason, they did units, because you could have eight two-bedroom units, or you could have four, doing my math, four-bedroom units.
Right.
And it's still the same number of bedrooms.
Right.
So I would hope that when the analysis is done, that it's based on bedrooms, plus other things, like number of seats in a restaurant, if there's going to be, you know, a hairdresser shop that's going to use a certain amount of water, you know, that kind of thing. Because I think that is important, because in my past world, everything was always based on flow and bedrooms, not on a unit, two unit, three unit, four unit.
Oh, it's challenging, because density, like build-out analyses typically look at density, but to bridge that gap to flow, you have to look at bedrooms, right? So I mean, there are some additional assumptions that, the two analyses are apples to oranges, but I think the report, if you can suffer through all of the tables, does a really nice job of bridging that gap. And it assumes the worst-case scenario in terms of the number of bedrooms. So one dwelling unit, I believe they assume three bedrooms, and that's the flow that they calculate off of that. So I'd want to revisit the methodology for how it was done the first time and replicate that for a higher-density scenario.
Right. And I agree with what everyone here has said. And I think it would be smart to just bookmark the number of units per acre at this point with the caveat that we understand that we still need to know what, or, you know, what's going to be presented by Gloria as far as the bonus density incentive factor and all of that.
Right.
You know, I think we could beat this dead horse for a long time, and as Bob said, we really need to know what the proposal is from staff with regard to density and that kind of thing.
Yeah. Yes. I would agree with that. I think to make this discussion workable, we probably do need to wait until we meet again with Ryan and Gloria and look at it. And then we'll still have to make this decision, though, about what we want to go ahead with at this time to propose to the town. And again, Warren, I want to say, I wholeheartedly agree with you about increasing the density. I couldn't agree with you more. However, we do need to remember that we're proposing a bylaw amendment to the town, and in general, we need to have the information and the analysis to back it up. And right now, we don't have that. So we'll have to make a decision about whether to postpone this entire action until we do have some analysis to back up a higher-density proposal, like eight units per acre or something, or do we want to go ahead now and with the inclusionary piece that's going to give incentives for increased density, propose what we have now, and then in a later action, when we have analyses to support it, we could propose increased density. So that's the decision point that I'm going to propose we're going to have to make next time we meet together with Ryan and Gloria. Mr. Dubus?
Just want to throw in a little kicker on this.
Okay.
Right now, we're discussing between four and eight. There are also, you can mention about four to six.
Sure.
In some instances, instead of the four to eight, or four to 12, or whatever, but you could still bring up, in a certain instance, if the property's a little smaller, that you could go from four, and then with a bonus, you could put two extra in. And in that aspect also, as bonuses, so instead of always saying, you know, we're going to go from four to eight, you could go four to six, to eight, to 10, to 12, depending on the land source we're dealing with at the time, because we've cut the land source for development and stuff quite sharply by taking out the other couple of lots. There were some land that, in the future, could produce a few more things, and I don't know if you could ever add them in the future or not, but I don't know. One is a motel. You might be able to deal with a motel in a non-conforming way and put in so many units per acre there. I'll just throw that in as a kicker.
Okay. Charlene, did you?
I just had, so it's four units per acre theoretically right now. What about, and I don't know this, and I should have done my own homework here, but it just dawned on me, how many lots are under an acre? And then will they be restricted? So if it's only a half an acre, are they only going to get two units?
So there is an appendix that details the size of all of the parcels. I don't know the count off the top of my head, how many there are, but that is within the report.
And the four units would also include if you had commercial with apartments, those apartments would count towards those four units?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. I got Bob.
Yeah, I sort of, I'm trying to figure this out in terms of where our control comes in. So let's say there were 20 parcels with four in it. That would be 80 units maximum. Now, some of them are not going to be developed, and others, you know, so do we have, if we have the ability to, at some point, say eight to some and such, are we playing a zero-sum game here where when we give eight out, that means now there's only 72 left?
No, we're not, no.
So everybody will have the opportunity to go at that level? So then it should be two, and we should be allocating out the extras in a way that we have more control over giving incentives to people? Because if everybody can do four, and that's what the limit is, we really have no power over them to insist that they make them affordable. But if they could only build two, but we could give them eight because we have, you know, we have some more to allocate, then I think we shouldn't put them all into the density requirement, but we should keep those in reserve for affordable, you know, multiple housing units. Think about that.
This is a comment, Bob. I mean, if we end up with two per acre, you're going to end up with two multimillion-dollar condos.
Yes, but.
Period.
But we, if they just go ahead and build two, they're only allowed two, but if they come to us and say, "I want to build a multifamily housing unit with 10, of which eight are affordable," we can, we have the ability to say yes and not come anywhere near the limit of the area in terms of its capacity. I'm wondering how much control we could have if we didn't have the maximum for every unit.
So I think that your control can be governed through how you set the inclusionary baseline threshold.
Yeah.
And if you set that at two units, or three units, or four units, then you can retain control over how many units would be affordable or attainable for any multi-unit development proposed. I think in terms of density, thinking about four units per acre is really just a sort of a policy framework, right? I mean, once the zoning is established, lot lines can change. Parcels can merge, they can carve sections off to work with the density that's allowed, right? So I think you could conceivably see that in some of the underdeveloped parcels that are there, some that are fairly built out, you may not. But I would try to think of the two as sort of separate, and the best chance the town has to create the affordable units is to incentivizing the developer. So setting a low threshold and creating strong incentives for a certain number of units at certain affordable or attainable points is the best assurance you have.
So there's the threshold, and then there's the minimum density per acre.
Mm-hmm.
They're two different things.
But we're setting a maximum density here. That's a max, the way it's stated there, it's a maximum density.
I think we had been talking about eight units per acre as a minimum. This, so four units per acre would be a maximum density unless you're providing affordable and attainable units. That's the density bonus incentive.
Right.
But would we have the threshold at two units per acre? Could we still have the threshold at two units per acre? So, yes.
That's a decision point you'll make as that bylaw develops forward, and our intent is to have you make that decision so that it can be incorporated within this district if the bylaw townwide is not ready for next town meeting.
And then, this is maybe the question, this is an obvious answer. If we incentivize developments of over four units per acre, then we're still not, we still don't have the analyses to back that up. Is that correct?
So to establish a townwide district, you wouldn't have that analysis done, but on a development-by-development basis, part of the.
Oh, I see.
The review under site plan approval and under the building permit and the health approvals is the water and sewer commissioners weigh in and make a determination about whether or not there is flow capacity to support the proposed development.
Right.
So you have that level of coverage in the permitting process.
Okay, great.
So it is what I said. The first ones in, if they're all coming in at eight, and we get seven or eight of those, and there's just no more capacity, the next person that comes in, at that point, it would be sorry. So.
That's a different planning problem that we have in town.
Right, right. So we don't need to, but we don't need to then be concerned with the four being a limit on what we can do.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, correct. Yes.
You have to understand, Bob, that our new sewer system was made for the whole town. And we gave away some of the houlish because we have overflow. So to say that we're going to maximize the system out on the West Chatham Center is kind of pushing the cart before the horse, because they're figuring on being able to sewer the whole town, but the whole town is not going to get sewed. There are places in this town that will never get it, because it's not a necessary evil to that.
I understand that.
So I kind of don't believe that we're going to run out of sewer. What we're going to run out of is drinkable water, if we're not careful. That's the main problem with it. But I don't think that's going to affect the center, the village centers. It's too small an area. And you've got to remember, this village center is already built out to maybe a little more than 80%. And unless somebody's going to invest a lot of money in some of the parcels to change it, it's going to stay pretty much the way it is. It's going to be, I think it's going to be a slow process to convert and redesign the West Chatham Center to this vision of everybody walking through it like downtown. And I don't believe that's going to happen for a long time.
I totally agree, and I think I got my answer, that we're not, that four unit is not a restriction on what we can do, and that's the most important thing.
Yeah. Yes, Arthur?
Yeah, all good conversations. I just thought I'd put my two cents in. I mentioned earlier this year, when, this was around January, when we were looking at the public hearing process, about proceeding on this for the May town meeting. I was supportive of that, all right? I'm supportive of that now, too, all right? And the caution that I said back then is the same caution that I want to put forward right now. I don't want to complicate this or create such confusion for the voting public to say, "You're not ready," okay? I think we need to come up with a clear picture of all of this, and I think what I'm hearing is the right way to go. There's two components on this, as you had it. The input from the community that said, and the visioning study that said four units per acre, and then you have an infrastructure piece. To go down the pathway of trying to deal with an infrastructure piece and all of that and roll that into this, I think you're heading in the wrong direction. The community is going to make a decision on that input that they provided before, plus the visioning study. Solid information that we have to support this. And is that a more likely success at the town meeting versus pushing a parallel pathway that we're still struggling with, and it's going to be hard to convey at informational meetings as well as at the town meeting? So I think some of the guidance that I've been hearing tonight from Ryan and community development about going with a baseline of four units per acre, and the incentive piece, which I think is going to be the best way of going about it, is a good way to go. And I think that that's going to get us to the two-thirds vote that we're looking for, and that's what I'm promoting. So whether I think that eight or 12 is better is almost inconsequential. I'm looking at this from a success standpoint, and I think the success standpoint, at least with this piece, I think we're going to get better support if we continue down a pathway that has been suggested. That's on my.
Good, thank you. Other comments? Warren, please go ahead.
I think we're coming around to four acres, four units per acre is the facts of life My question is, I guess, whether or not it is possible to ensure, to require that some proportion of even four acres, four units per acre, is affordable.
I think it is. I think that's what we've been discussing.
And whether that's in the bylaw or it's case by case as you come to the board.
Yeah.
Yep. I think our intention is to have that definitely in the inclusionary and incentive zoning bylaws as a requirement, but reflected here as well.
That was really my point. And then, again, I would like to be able to ensure that the affordable, attainable is the first of the four that are built, not the last.
Yeah. So I think those, again, I think I'm hearing agreement on the board, but also that we have to postpone our final decision on the piece about density until we can also discuss the inclusionary piece that we'll be doing in our next discussion when we meet with Ryan and Gloria. Yes?
Yeah, I'm just, I don't know the exact wording here, but if it's a recommended four units per acre, that's really the average we're looking for. I don't want anybody to say, "Oh, you guys voted, you can't have more than four units per acre." So it's not the maximum allowed by us, and I just want to make sure that the wording doesn't say something like, "Four units per acre is the amount that's allowed." So be real careful about how that's worded, because what the four acre, units per acre is, is it's our average for the density across the entire group, and we can decide that we would like to have areas that have higher density than that. And I don't want that bylaw to limit us to be able to do that.
We can ensure that's clear.
Okay, great. Okay. So we should move on. Let's move on to the next question, prohibition on single-family uses. Ryan's mentioning that prohibiting single-family uses in the district does not prohibit the co-locations of detached single-family dwellings on one parcel. We may wish to keep the prohibition and make the distinction throughout our public outreach that the prohibition applies only to one single-family use per parcel and not to multiple single-family dwellings per parcel. So, did you want to give us any more points about this?
Sure. And my recommendations evolved a little bit since I wrote this memo. I mean, creating a multi-use district really does prohibit any undeveloped land being developed with a single-family residence on one parcel.
Right.
So by establishing the district with these multifamily components, single-family is not a recognized use, and therefore, it would be prohibited. I think there's been some confusion around development types where, for instance, a cottage colony could redevelop with multiple single-family structures. That would be considered a multifamily development.
Okay.
So that wouldn't be precluded. I think that. I think that you don't need to be explicit with a prohibition on single-family uses. Establishing the multifamily mixed-use district does not expressly allow them, therefore they would be prohibited going forward. Now that said, there are some existing single-family homes on individual parcels within the district that may become non-conforming. If that's a concern, we can try to identify some language that would recognize their zoning protections back to the date of permitting or something to that effect. But I, I can talk with council about that a little bit more if it's a concern of the board.
Charlene?
Those units would certainly become lawfully pre-existing non-conforming, and if they were doing something other, if they were changing use or something like that, certainly it would require relief either through this board, zoning board. But I think there are ways to do it that if they're putting an addition on to their home, expanding their kitchen, or putting a pool in, they can do that by right. I think there are ways that that language can clearly be written.
Yeah.
But other than that, I, you know, I, I think she's, I think Ryan has covered this very clearly, because you can do some very unique multi-unit development on a parcel where they're all single-family.
Yeah.
And it just, it's really nice. Or a couple of single-family in a duplex, or something along those lines.
Okay, good. Yes, Warren?
Ryan, just a couple of quick comments. You know, the first, the section 40, or 40B, whatever it is, so the attainable housing, that was, could be single-family developments as proposed, and would be effectively outside the framework of the bylaw.
Right.
Covered separately. So you might expect, as we do, I think, expect something with municipal property there that's on, already in the permitting process. So there would be some single-family houses in the North Chatham Neighborhood Center. And the second comment is that while I'm not opposed to single-family housing, I've got to recognize Chatham is not short of single-family houses. That's not what we need more of. We need to ensure that we're having multifamily, multi-use, a neighborhood center that is different than a way that people can shoehorn in single-family houses, because that's not what we need, so.
Yep. I've tried to make that clear, that single-family houses on individual parcels is not what we need more of. But single-family structures co-located on individual parcels may be an attractive form of developing community housing in a more of a dense format, and would be supported here by this district.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think, I was going to say what Charlene said, but I also see the possibility of an existing single-family house saying, oh, I can build a second house now on my property, and how, I guess that would be fine under the circumstances. So, any, I just want to make sure that that would be the only other possibility. I mean, they could tear it down, in which case they're no longer non-conforming, they just have a property and they have to conform. Or, but what if they took that house and said, oh, I, I'm not allowed to be denser than I was before, so I'm just going to build another house on that same lot? And do we have the provisions within this bylaw to, to make sure that is done in a way that meets the, what we want?
They may be able to do that now under the accessory dwelling ordinance that the town has, so depending on the size.
Yeah, but that's a certain sizing requirement. Now we're, now we, we have a certain, we, we've eliminated the density issues, we, so we may have, they may be able to build it without it being an accessory dwelling unit. I, I think there's just a couple of those kinds of things that we probably want to think through before we-
So conversions of existing dwellings to multifamily dwellings or special condition uses, so those would come before you under site plan review.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great, yes. Any other comments before we move to the next point?
Did you want to vote on these individually?
Um, we could take a vote. Yes, so we would vote to accept the staff recommendation.
I move to accept staff recommendation regarding item number two, prohibition of single-family uses.
All right.
Could I-
Yes.
Just amend that a little bit?
Yes.
I think my recommendation was to keep the prohibition, but I would like to revise-
I know, I didn't know how to word that.
Yeah, that it's, that it isn't necessary, that single-family uses are not recognized as an allowed use within the district, therefore a prohibition.
I will accept that amendment to my motion.
So, let me just get this straight. So you're advising to keep the prohibition?
Uh, there's no reason to establish a prohibition because they are not recognized uses under the use schedule, single-family.
Okay, great. All right, all right. And how is that a revision of what you have written here? If, sorry to make you repeat this.
So I had suggested calling out a prohibition.
All right.
And now I'm saying you don't need to call it out.
All right. So are we agreed on that, or do we think it needs to be called out?
I, I think it, what needs to be in there is a explanation that multiple buildings of single, detached are allowed.
Constitute as a multifamily-
I mean, that needs to be there. That, because that's what people are always, that's where their confusion is. So if it just says, that's allowed as a multifamily property, they don't have to be attached to be a multifamily property. That's all we really need to do there.
And I feel like I could word that in a frequently asked questions, public outreach piece as we, we, we go through that to make that more clear. But I don't think you need to insert language about a prohibition within the language of the bylaw now.
All right. And then I'm just going to be the devil's advocate here and just, because knowing how sometimes zoning is used, so if someone came along and really wanted to build a single-family home and challenged us and just said, well, it's just omitted from the table, doesn't mean it's prohibited, it's just not there.
So typically how the building commissioner enforces the zoning bylaw is if it's not an expressly permitted use, it's not allowed.
Okay, great.
It's strictly prohibited.
Right.
Okay, great. All right, good. So, motion? Can we have a motion then?
Well, I made a, I made a, an amended-
I made a motion.
I made a motion that was amended to accept Ryan's recommendation.
Great.
I, I second that.
Great. So, Bob Wurzchefter?
Bob Wurzchefter approve.
Art Spru?
Art Spru approve.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain approve.
Charlene Greenholt?
Charlene Greenholt approve.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus approve.
Mrs. Catherine Hopper and I approve. Great. All right, thank you. So next is the year-round rental requirements. And I think what Ryan is suggesting, that we do special condition for the multifamily dwellings that will come before the board, and that that's a better method of handling our desire to make these year-round living rather than expressly putting it into the bylaw. Ryan, did you want to make any comments on that? And then we'll see if there's questions from the board.
No, I think it's in a, it's in the purpose and intent of, of the district, and it would be well within your purview to create a, a condition during site plan review that, that units or all units be a year, under a year-round residential restriction.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the board? So again, I think I would like to take a motion that we accept the staff recommendation on this point.
I move that we accept the staff recommendation regarding year-round rental requirements.
Thank you.
I second.
Thank you. Bob Wurzchefter?
Bob Wurzchefter approve.
Art Spru?
Art Spru approve.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain approve.
Charlene Greenholt?
Charlene Greenholt approve.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus approve.
And this is Catherine Hopper, and I also approve. You know what? I'd like to actually skip over to point five, because there might be some discussion about the boundaries, and I think, let's go to point five, the RPC footnote language. I think we've, the board has reviewed, reviewed this thoroughly. Are there any questions from the board? Do we feel any need for changes? So, let's have a motion to accept staff recom, yes?
Just, just one clarification, and I think I mentioned this to you before. I saw when you flashed up there, it was still the reference to the, to the old definition of where the RPC dimensions are.
Opened the layout plan.
Provided information previously about, it, it wasn't in the layout plan, it's actually in the master plan, so-
You did, yes.
I think you have that information, so that's the only modification. Everything else was, was fine. I just want to make sure that, that the reference of what the RPC physically is and where it is, is correctly referenced, that's all.
Okay, great.
No, thank you, good catch.
And the staff recommendation is to incorporate the footnotes pertaining to the RPC as proposed and no further action? Did you have a comment, Charlene?
No, I was going to make a motion.
Please do.
That we approve the staff recommendation to include the footnote as proposed with the correction as noted by Arthur.
Thank you so much.
I second.
Bob Wurzchefter approve.
Art Spru?
Art Spru approve.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain approve.
Charlene Greenholt?
Charlene Greenholt approve.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus approve.
Okay. Mrs. Catherine Hopper and I also approve. I think the affordable and attainable housing strategy, we have also discussed that we will continue that, which is the staff recommendation. I actually don't think we need to vote, we'll just be continuing this discussion. Let's move on, therefore, to the district boundaries. And I'm wondering, Ryan, could we look at the map again, and can you explain what your proposal is to revise them at this point?
Yes, so it's those four highlighted parcels. This is the district boundary in its most recent board-recommended version, including the subzones. But the parcels that are highlighted there include the former Buckley property, a conservation, town-owned piece of land, the Buckley property is now also owned by the town. And then I believe there's a skinny residential parcel, and then there is the, is that the Master Mariner property?
Master Mariner? No.
The Chatham Motel, thank you.
It's the Chatham Motel, yeah. Okay, great. So the, so the four properties to the south and to the east you're proposing we eliminate from the West Chatham Neighborhood Center, that we not include them?
Correct. And the primary reason for that is that, one, beyond the Rotary, the roadway character really changes. It becomes a, a very residential zone. I, I know the board has talked about some transitional residential zoning there that may be of a slightly higher density than R-20. I think we could look at that as a separate planning initiative. There's some cottage colony communities there that may lend themselves to some more focused planning analysis. And then as you move several parcels down, you start to get into the district area for the cornfield. So if the, the purpose and intent of these, of noting our village centers along Route 28 and eliminating the potential for commercial development in between was, was really an anti-sprawl initiative.
Right.
Right? So I think shrinking the district back to what is a little bit more consistent with the commercial development that's there, the comprehensive plan, vision, and, and some other potential zoning initiatives may make sense.
So I just wanted to comment, and we'll take other comments, to address Bob Dubus' concerns, that I think the idea for those four parcels is in a separate action in the future that we could structure greater residential density, a zone that would allow greater residential density for those four parcels, but it would not include the commercial piece that we're including in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center proper, you could say.
And I would invite you to look at the housing webpage to see the development scenarios that are proposed for the Buckley property. Their typologies that range from 10 units per acre all the way up to 50 units per acre, so they really are looking at a range of, of fairly dense housing options for that site.
Yeah, that's great. Charlene?
And I just wanted to say that there are a number of communities that have initiated the allowance of conversion of old cottage colonies or hotel motels to housing, you know, making it so it's year-round housing, and that's where the, the, oh my goodness, it just popped out of my, the incentive zoning would come into play, is that a certain number of those units would have to become affordable and/or attainable units. So there, there, there are bylaws already out there that could cover something like that in the future. So, I, I don't have as, as great a concern removing these four, because I think at some point in the future, and two of them are going to be town-owned and, and become affordable housing anyway.
Right.
So they'd be off the table. So there are other ways to, to address these properties.
Right, right. Okay, that was the idea. Other comments on this? Mr. Dubus?
Yes.
You, you, are you okay with this?
No, I am okay with it.
Okay.
Oh, Master Mariner, and it's not the Master Mariner, but that's a-
No, it's not the Master Mariner.
Oh, you can correct that.
Yes.
No, I'm, I'm okay with it.
Okay.
I see in the, as long as in the future they could-
Yeah.
Bring it back to the table for, like you say, a non, non-commercial.
But greater residential density, yeah.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, great. All right. So again, we want a motion that we accept staff recommendation regarding the boundaries.
I move that we recommend, we accept staff recommendation to consider removing those four parcels, and to make it clear that it is not the Master Mariner, but the Chatham Motel.
Thank you. Okay, great. Second?
Bob Wurzchefter approve.
Art Spru?
Art Spru approve.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain approve.
Charlene Greenholt?
Charlene Greenholt approve.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus approve.
Mrs. Catherine Hopper and I also approve. Great. So I think we've reached some good decision points, and again, I want to thank Ryan for all the work you've put into this. And yes, really great memo, and we will continue the discussion of density and affordable and attainable housing strategy together when we meet again with Ryan and Gloria, and hopefully we should come to some decision points on those issues as well. Okay, great.
Thank you all.
Great. Now, I'm just going to ask if there's any public comment on anything we've discussed tonight? And I don't see anybody connected remote, oh, there are some people connected remotely, and I do see a hand raised, but I can't see the name of the person.
Elaine Gibbs.
Elaine Gibbs. So Elaine, would you like to go ahead?
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of things. When I first read about the density where it said that it was supported water and sewer by natural resources, I assumed that was recent. I know that you all recognize that that's a very old report. A lot has happened in the last 10 years in terms of particularly drinking water, as Mr. Dubus mentioned. So I think there needs to be a more updated look at that in terms of density and whether or not we're going to be able to support that. We have serious, serious problems with our drinking water, and it's going to cost potentially hundreds of millions to make sure we have enough storage capacity and filtration for any PFAS or anything else that comes down the pike. The only other thing right now is that when you're talking about year-round rental requirements, I'm still confused as to whether or not everything you think is going to be built there are going to be rentals, or if some of these units are going to be sold. So that if they're sold, I don't know how you control, something to think about, whether or not somebody who's bought a property is restricted and is told that they cannot rent it out. So, I think that's something that's got to be addressed at some point. And that's it for now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Elaine. Any other comments from the public? I see a couple of people connected. I don't see any other hands raised. No other comments? If there's no other public comment, I would like to ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Madam Chair, I so move that we adjourn this meeting.
Thank you so much. May I have a second?
I second it.
Thank you so much.
Bob Wurzchefter approve.
Art Spru?
Art Spru approve.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain approve.
Charlene Greenholt?
Charlene Greenholt approve.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus approve.
And let's note the time as six, is that 6:35 PM? Thank you, everybody, for participating, and enjoy the rest of the evening.